So it is 7:00 PM on March 13th, 2018. I'd like to call the College Place City Council meeting to order. Start off with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could have a moment of silence for reflection. Thank you all. This is now the period for public comment. Anybody wishing to address the College Place City Council, please step to the microphone and state your name and address. Anybody wishing to address the College Place City Council, please step forward and state your name and address. Seeing none, we have a consent agenda before us approving this evening's agenda, approving the council minutes from February 27th, 2018, including the council workshop minutes from March 6th, 2018, and the check register and financials for January 2018, and approving the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
It's been moved by Ms. Nyhagen. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's seconded by Ms. Sherman. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes unanimously. Mr. Rizzatello, National League of Cities Private Sewer Line Program.
Thank you, Mayor. This agenda item was introduced the last meeting. This program is put together by National League of Cities and the company Utility Service Partners. They basically offer insurance for private water sewer lines. The terms and conditions are in the information for consideration. $6 monthly fee for water sewer, $9 monthly fee, and it's optional. It just raises the knowledge of this program to the residents. This was on our radar because the cities of Hermiston, Oregon, and Dayton, Washington, just opted into this to notify the residents that such a program exists. Because a lot of residents don't really understand about the liability of the private sewer water lines until something happens, and then it's a big cost. This would help cover that. So there's no cost to the city. It's a sign in agreement that essentially they could send a little fire to residents about what this program is, and it just educates homeowners about this program.
Questions for Ms. Rizzatello. Mr. Peterson.
So Mike, if we okay this, this company will be contacting?
Yeah.
I mean, this is not anything that we would educate the citizens about, obviously, because this is a separate company.
Yeah.
But this is something that they will go out and contact each individual or each homeowner. Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah. They just send like a little educational fire. And again, it says it's not required or anything. It's just that this program exists.
Okay. Thanks, Mike.
We'd probably put something in the monthly utility bill saying, hey, you're going to get something from these folks, and that's about it. No promotion, just letting black people know it's in the general.
Sounds good.
Any other questions for Mr. Rizzatello? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I move to authorize the city administrator to sign the marketing agreement with Utility Services.
It's been moved by Ms. Nyhagen.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. The next on the agenda item is the city council invocation resolution. I think we've discussed this several times. This provides us a way of having an invocation with little liability to the city as recommended by the Municipal Services Research Center. We took the information from the city of Waschuggle, and it provides the ability to have that open invocation with, for not only the council but anybody wishing to come in and provide an invocation. Are there any questions? Ms. Sherman.
How will this be communicated to people so we know they can sign up? And is it, I'm going to have a follow-up question.
Again, this would be done through the monthly utility bill.
I think that we talked about that. I just can't remember. And is it open only, it's not open just to members of college or citizens of college? It could be anybody?
It could be anybody.
So this is to provide an indication?
Provide an indication?
That we can have it?
We can have it.
And invite others to?
Invite either the council, city employees, or others from the outside to participate in that indication. But the only limit on it is there's a kind one that we like to keep it to about seven And there's some stipulations about not disparaging anybody, or it really is an unopened invitation. Is there a motion? Mr. Bobbitt.
Mayor Crowder, I move that we approve Resolution Number 18-006, providing guidelines for an invocation for council meetings.
It's been moved by Mr. Bobbitt. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion?
I'll wait in a second.
Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Gordon, Southwest Area Sanitary Sewer Plan Update Contract.
Thank you, Mayor. You've seen this item before several times, back in late January. We requested permission to go out and advertise for proposals for this particular study. You banned it out. We went out for bid in early February, got bids back, or I should say proposals back February 22nd. Staff sat down, and we went through all proposals, and we came up with our recommendation. We got proposals from three of the firms. We got it from JUB, RH2, and EBS. And we selected JUB, and we're recommending that you approve the contract with them tonight. Just here, as a reminder, this particular study establishes grades, alignments, and so forth for the southwest area, which has just recently come into our city limits, as well as the area to the south. And the value of this particular study not only will help us to establish the actual alignments for the trunk line, the sewer, in the future, it will also help us to determine what the cost of the developer's portion will be with respect to the whole project. Because some of it will be oversized for the future, and that's something the city would have to pay for. But his part will be able to distinguish as a part of this. So tonight, we're just coming for you, asking for you to consider approving this particular contract with JUB.
Questions for Mr. Gordon.
The dollar amounts, you put in this, please?
Yeah, the dollar manst-.
I got paper for it.
Yes, it should be on the one on.
Yeah, the dollar, it's a, the actual contract is for $32,400 with a 10% contingency for a total of $35,640.
I apologize.
Well, no, it's actually on, it's on the electronic version, but Ms. Nyhagen didn't get there. Mr. Peterson.
Mayor, I would make a motion to authorize the mayor or designated to sign the agreement with JUB to perform the Southwest Area Sanitary Sewer Plan Update for $32,400 plus a 10% contingency of $3,240 for a total not to exceed amount of $35,640.
It's been moved by Mr. Peterson.
I will second.
It's been seconded by Mr. Cleveland. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Hartwig, Influent Flow Meter at the Wastewater Treatment Plant.
Council authorized us to hire an engineering firm to design the influent flow meter that is now basically complete, and we're ready to go out and to bid. What we're looking at, and the reason it came about is, back in 1980, the Department of Ecology required the meter where it was now placed, where it is now placed. What the problem with it is, when we do process work inside the plant, that water comes back in, but it comes in upstream of the meter, and we count it twice. So really, our influent flows are not as high as they are because the, and we want to fix that. We want to get an accurate measurement of what flows are coming into the plant. And so we are going to relocate that flow meter upstream of the return flow, so we'll have an accurate accounting of it. In your packet, you'll see the price. The engineering estimate is roughly about $140,000 for this project. It'd be financed through the wastewater revenues. And then we also have on our second item, and that is to approve, asking for you to approve the construction engineering or inspection and that type of stuff of the project. And I believe that one is for $23,500. So it'll help us in terms of being accurate on our flows that go into the plant, which reduces our chances of, or slows the process down of us reaching capacity and having to do more improvements.
Questions for Mr. Hartwig. Mr. Peterson.
Paul, when you say relocate, what kind of distance are you talking about moving the meter?
Right, the volume two draft plans. So, and you actually don't see the meter, the existing meter here, but the new one will come right into this area. The new one is on the backside of the treatment building. So it's another probably 400 feet north of where we are going to be. The influent, the recirculation water is coming in right into this area, and that's, and we want to get it below that.
Other questions for Mr. Gordon? Is there a motion? Ms. Sherman.
I'll make a motion to authorize administration to execute a contract with SPVV Landscape Architects for AE Professional.
Oops. Wrong one.
Did I skip ahead? I'm so sorry.
You did.
Motion to, oh, do I do both of these at once? Or do I need to do one at a time?
I think they're two separate, aren't they?
Do we need to do them separate, or I don't know? The, probably clean.
Okay, motion, I'd like to make a motion to authorize going to bid for the construction of new influent flow meter at Wastewater Treatment Plant.
It's been moved by Ms. Sherman. Is there a second?
Second.
It's seconded by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
And then I'd like to make a motion to authorize administration to execute a construction engineering contract with JUB for oversight of the influent flow meter installation in the amount of $23,500.
It's been moved by Ms. Sherman, seconded by Ms. Nyhagen. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Hartwig. Lions Park Renovation, Mr. Ricard.
Thank you. So staff will be going out and applying for likely three different grant categories to the Recreation and Conservation Office for, excuse me, the next funding cycle for park projects. And part of that, it's a competitive process that we have to go through. There's presentations at, in Olympia before the RCO Board for their selection process. So as part of the conference of plan update, the park plan update, the survey results showed that Lions Park needed significant upgrades, ADA upgrades, restrooms, playground equipment, splash pad is on the wish list, dredging the pond, quarter-mile walking path was one of the items, and then possibility of redoing the athletic fields there. That's a lot of things to fit into that park. It's a seven-acre park. So we put out a RFP for preliminary design, conceptual site plan layouts, and that would include some schematics to present to the board, and also assistance in preparing detailed estimates for the project so that when we go to the state, we'll have sound numbers to request a grant from. We had five proposals that were submitted, and I would note that we're under quite a time crunch. The May 1st is the application deadline. So you'll notice that the request is not to exceed $65,000. We don't anticipate it coming anywhere close to that, but that's the amount we've budgeted this year for park design and Lions Park. Any questions?
I apologize. The other work that was going to be done at the park, just a brief update, there was the dredging of the pond, there was the redirection of the stream flow and a few other things. I think this has been discussed many times. What's the status of that?
So we partnered with the Tri-State Steel headers on a preliminary design for dredging the pond, separating the stream channel from the pond, removing the weir, also doing some enhancements along Garrison Creek throughout the park to improve the critical areas buffer along through there. The preliminary estimates that we're getting back from Anderson Perry on that portion of it are significant. There's also the separation of the stormwater facility that's coming from the development to the south upon the bluff. Just to dredge the pond, separate it from the creek channel, remove the weir, we're looking at close to $300,000 for that portion of it, and then another $200,000 for additional enhancements along the creek and other aspects of it, and then the stormwater component. So we may come back and find that there's not a suitable grant category with RCO for that much of a project. It's very extensive. They don't typically fund dredging projects of that capacity. So we'll be looking at options to possibly just dredge the pond and leave it as part of the Mill Creek, or, excuse me, thank God it's not Mill Creek, the Garrison Creek Channel, and possibly scaling back some of the environmental enhancements along the creek for the critical areas. And then we definitely want to separate the pollution, the stormwater that's directly dumping into it. There may be grant options from Ecology for that part of the project. So we'll just have to see. That's part of what we're having the consultant look at. And I would note that SPVV, it's a landscaping firm up in the Spokane area, they are, one of their project partners, consultants on this is Anderson Perry. So we're not losing the money that we've spent so far on the preliminary design for the pond aspect of it.
Thank you.
Mr. Peterson.
That sounds like a very expensive pond.
Yes?
Kind of bringing up the speed here, I'm dredging up, no pun intended, memories of discussions we've had in the past, possible action. Have we ever done anything to improve that pond of all the discussion we've had?
Not since, we haven't done anything other than, you know, supplementary design work since, you know, in the last five years or so. Back in the 90s or late 80s, the Public Works Department did dredge it. So, I mean, that's an option, and so we'll.
But we've never improved sidewalks or cement walls or separated one end from the other, the inlet?
We haven't done anything to it.
Haven't done anything?
No.
Okay, so it's just been talked about.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Ricard. Is there a motion?
I will motion to authorize administration to execute a contract with SPVV Landscape Architects for AE/AE Professional Services associated with the Lions Park Renovation Project in the amount not to exceed $65,000.
Moved by Mr. Cleveland. Is there a second?
Second.
It's seconded by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Ricard, Blue Mountain Regional Trails Plan.
So the Blue Mountain Regional Trails Plan is a regional effort that the council has been supportive of in the past. You provided a letter of support. Our role, the city's role so far has been administrative report, support, attending meetings, attending the public workshops. It's been very extensive. It goes from Columbia County all the way down into Oregon into the Milton-Freewater area, and it's had tremendous support from the public, the outreach. We received over nearly 1,000 comments on the plan. It has extensive, so we did two rounds of public workshops, eight sessions total. So each jurisdiction, so Walla Walla was considered a jurisdiction. We had two workshops there. Columbia County had workshops, Freewater had workshops. There's a project website. We've had over 20,000 hits, 142 comments on the website. The plan totals 354 miles of new or improved non-motorized transportation, 15 miles of new sidewalks, so that would be in the urbanized areas like College Place, nine miles of new bike routes, bike lanes, 250 miles of designated bike routes and shared roads, 21 miles of improved and new paved paths, 94 miles of improved or new trails, and total cost for regional connections of $103 million, including $4.6 million for short-term implementations. So what this plan will do is, it allows, once it's adopted by local jurisdictions, it will allow us to apply for certain grants. You know, when we're applying for TIB grants, we can mention, well, there's been a plan in place, and this route's been designated for bike lanes, so that gives us the support to apply for the revenues that are available. So what we're doing now is adopting locally at the local jurisdictions, and then we'll include it in our park plan as a reference. We'll include it in our conference of plan. And then ongoing, we're still meeting, and we'll continue to meet as a group to make sure that we're all on the same page. And at some point, we'll likely go through another update, you know, mark off the list of our accomplishments and so on and so forth. The, yeah, is that page 28? So in the plan, there's a lot of good, good maps, but specifically, if you go to, oh, I guess it was page 32. So here's the College Place one. So you can see the different routes that we've identified, shared roads, so College Avenue, C Street. You can look at Fourth Street, and we have sidewalks that we're talking about doing improvements, and bike lanes, connections. So when we developed these maps, we sat down with the city of Walla Walla and said, okay, well, where are your bike routes? Where are your bike lanes? Where are your bike paths, multi-use paths? So we wanted to make sure that we're connecting up and bike lanes are continuing fluently with, from one community to the next. Now, they don't do that right now necessarily, but the goal is, is that they will. So it's a great plan. It's, the MPO was instrumental in kind of herding the cats, so to speak. They did a wonderful job and put, created most of the maps that are in there with input from all the communities. Any questions?
Questions for Mr. Sherman. Mr. Rizzatello.
I would just add, at the last meeting of our advisory park, harbor, and recreation board, they voted to recommend the city council adoption of this document.
That's right. I think I left that out of the packet. Thank you, Mike.
Is there a motion? No, we don't do it. This is just.
There is no motion.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rizzatello. Moving on to city mission statement.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. With this agenda item, in looking at our strategic plan, we set forth the vision statement, the goals, objectives, policy, but one of the things that we realized was accidentally missed was the mission statement. So Harvey and I, we've been researching it because previously, the city has used various iterations of mission statements. One of them was a fantastic place to live, shop, and work, and that was basically an iteration of what Walla Walla used to use, which is a great place to live, shop, to live, work, and do business. In looking at mission statements that really would connect all of the work that was achieved during the strategic plan, the statement we landed on is the following. Our mission is to provide leadership and effective, fiscally responsible services that achieve our community's vision, because it ties back to the vision statement in the strategic plan. This was introduced at the city council workshop, so this is just being introduced here at this council meeting.
Questions for Mr. Rizzatello myself. Classically, Mr. Peterson.
So I'm reading here, we're small town, living and learning meet.
Yeah.
Is that what you're talking about?
Well, that isn't really a mission statement. It's a tagline. So when you're doing promotional materials, it's a tagline to the.
I was going to question that sentence because it, there may be, may infer that there's small, small-time learning here, you know? I'm not sure what the connection would be there. How about if you left out small towns, that we're living and learning meet, or something like that?
That's not what we're looking at.
I mean, we could, but that was in the overarching strategic plan. That isn't really a mission statement. That's just merely a tagline.
Yeah, I understand, but I still want to mention it because the, just the combination of words there is a little.
Well, we definitely could amend it if that's the desire of this body.
Other questions on the mission statement? Thank you, Mr. Rizzatello. Is there a pardon?
Okay, Sean, if you could click on sheet two. So earlier this year, we ended up working with a consultant of a very expensive engineer, engineering, drawing the actual implementation of this, so it was actually quite a bit of money. But with this, we're trying to basically redevelop the parking lot where it's a multi-use space, so it's for parking, but then it accommodates events such as the farmer's market and winter fest. So you'll see islands in there with trees, and then also crosswalks and sidewalks to deal with ADA issues, which we currently aren't addressing. deal with ADA issues, which we currently aren't addressing. So, if the city council has any thoughts or comments, please let me know on this. One thing I will add is that the actual implementation of this, we are likely going to wait until after the summer because with our, with our engineering consultant, they came up with the draft estimate of this, and it's much higher right now because you have a pent-up, you basically have pent-up demand with all those capital projects that were funded by the state right now. So, if we were to go a bid on something like this right now, the whole thing, they had pegged at around two hundred eighty thousand, which is frankly ridiculous. In talking with parametrics, they feel that it'll go down after the summer, and then we can also achieve some efficiencies later on, such as phasing it where we can deal with the part in the front first and then do later sections, and then also work with our internal staff to do some of the demo work. So, this is a very fluid, fluid project. But if this body could please look at diagrams, if you have any thoughts or general ideas, we can come back to this at a later time.
Mr. Sherman?
I think it looks great. What would the cost be if we wait until after the summer?
I have, I have, I've requested that they give that to me because all the stuff literally got emailed to me yesterday. I just wanted to engage city council early on and have a longer discussion period.
What did we budget for it?
For, the idea was, all along is that we do this in multiple phases, but this year we budgeted fifty-five thousand.
Okay, so it's a little bit over.
Yeah.
Just six months.
Yeah.
Other questions for Mr. Gordon? Mr. Isatello, would you just give us a short update on the Community Economic Revitalization Board submitted that you've done?
Oh, yeah, so for the South College Place grant that you all authorized at previous meeting, just to give you an update on that, that passed the initial hurdle. So, with that grant, given the fact that we passed the initial window, we'll go over there to present, but likely won't end up giving the grant, so that's working well. With the other Community Economic Revitalization Board grant, the one which we obtained already, the Central College Place one, at a future city council meeting, you'll be presented with some concepts for some of our problematic large intersections because they did a very thorough traffic study to help with that. So, they came up with some concepts, amended traffic counts, and it, very well done, so that will be a future meeting.
Cool.
Very good.
Any discussion from the council?
Good job on the well-city, well-city, well-cities?
Yeah.
Two percent discount on the health insurance?
Nice.
Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn? It's been moved by Ms. Nyhagen, is there a second?
Second.
The seconded by Mr. Peterson, we are adjourned.